Yeah.
This is regular meeting of the garden school board of directors called me told. Lady legions, yeah. Lady send them place the links.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and here we go for the mission statement, one nation under God. In the middle of the day.
Any questions or concerns about the consent agenda?
Or no questions about the consent agenda, gonna have a motion to accept.
Nobody accept the agenda.
Second motion.
Got a motion second, all in favor of most say I, all in the same same side. Motion back.
Basically, the superintendent board, um, we've got a couple of things need to talk about executive session. Uh, but, uh, we lost family last week and our numbers are down to about six eleven. Now you may be even sixteen today, so numbers are down again. I mean, not good. Big ball game right now, everybody, everybody coming, keep talking about that, but you know, don't you have a?
Yes, sir. Do, I can tell you. Sorry. Just trying to find her little text. So we will have at the ball game, we're gonna have a tailgate party ahead of time. Um, so South Central Electric is providing hot dogs and a bag of chips, so like two hundred and fifty. Um, Robbie, I did ask them if they would post on their, um, thing, it's, there was gonna be a donation bucket and all that money will go back to the band. Cause we didn't want to, to, you know, take away from the band, but they, they, they bought two hundred and fifty hot dogs intentionally, kind of a low number to some degree. So we wouldn't take away from the band, um, um, Center Bank Corp is providing, uh, free waters and drinks. Um, and then we'll have a, like just a DJ to play some music, there will be some music there too, such kind of have like a kids entertainment zone as well too.
What, what time's like the start?
Uh, let me think, five, five, five o'clock.
We're at, I heard.
Yes, and so I was gonna ask Coach Jackson, that was one of my questions about where to set up. I'll talk to you later, if that's okay, about where to set up and, and do that with, so Stephen's gonna help us get it set up as well too. So, um, and then just kind of one introduce the superintendent and Jeremy, I'll get with you on a Facebook post on that too, so.
I missed you.
Yes, yes, all of, all of our administration for sure, so.
All right, uh. We need to organize our board, you know, somewhat, we need to elect a new vice president. Any nominations?
I'm gonna nominate Robbie.
The other nomination.
I nominate Paul.
I was saying, I haven't seen.
You would, I haven't seen the nomination. Right? Oh, you take over.
All right, we have a nomination of our vice president. Robert Moore, all in favor of this nomination, say I, all in dissent, same side.
Uh, we, we talked about having a legislative liaison, you know, from within the board. Uh, what is your pleasure, you wanna have one or you wanna not have? It's no big deal either way, it is one thing that for one person gets it and can sort of.
I understand, right, Cassie, did you say what you would do?
To do it, yes, sir.
Uh. I guess the next question, do you, do you wanna do it?
That's fine, I mean, I'll, I'll keep up with, um, I follow Sherry from the Arkansas board and just, I could make sure we get those emails, I know.
What you do is if you're on that, then they target you maybe, but they're gonna, if you're, you're all gonna get it. It's really sort of a deal where if we had a question, it'd be, we could have her pursue it or something like that, it's not a big deal.
Maybe the motion, they, they, Cassie comes out as a daylight.
We have a motion figured.
I say the motion.
Motion to say in all the favor of Cassie being the liaison. Say I, all in the same same side.
Hey, we probably need to draw for a redraw for a five year term.
It's one person.
Know what?
It's one person.
What do you mean that's one person?
He gonna want to draw a five year term.
I was only five year draw before.
I thought that's what we decided last.
Yeah, I mean, I need to do it again.
You need one person to draw, everybody else is four in this.
And so I need to draw to find if I'm one, two, three, or four. Cause there's not, not gonna be a five year.
You hold a number under?
Maybe just pick a number.
Uh, I need something, somebody make me.
Tear up some slips, paper, write.
I got some calls.
One thing.
Ain't gonna waste that time, we've already discussed this, so I'm just gonna make these motions, but we've already discussed it, I'm not wasting my time.
Remember one thing, we said we was gonna vote on.
Yeah, that's. And it's coming up next.
Which one was it?
No, it's, uh, when it come down to, uh, uh, Zoom meetings.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that was the only thing, oh, you know what this is, I'm not novices.
Which one is it?
Can't see too good, we not novices.
We're not one. Oh.
All right, shuffle them around.
Well, yes, it was me.
What, what'd you get?
One.
One?
One weird time.
Mercy. All right. All right, we, uh, went through the policies last, uh. Last week, the only thing probably that was left out there is what we're gonna do about policy one point six one. Uh, you know, attending meet remotely and y'all just need to make a decision on that. Do you want somebody to be able to do that, you wanna, you can do that, but only do it once or twice, or you wanna not do it at all? Uh, to y'all.
And I make the motion that we do not allow the, uh, attendance by Zoom.
We have a motion to not allow attendance, all in favor of that motion, say I.
Yes.
Point of order, we have to get a set.
Second.
Okay, we got this second now, all in favor of that motion, uh, to not allow Zoom meetings to be present, vote say I. All in the same same side. That motion passed.
Mr. President, I've moved forward, we also make the motion to accept the policies has changed as to get it to both fit the governance and the policies.
But we have a motion to accept the governance and the policies.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of accepting the governance and administration policy, say I, all in the same same side. That motion passed.
Our plan is to continue to the whole, the whole polit- personnel policy book and we plan on bringing something to you most months. But some months. May not make it through, there's several of them are really long, really long. Uh, on the COVID policy. What we did is the, up in, up in the consent agenda where it says, you know, plan for safe and continuous learning. Basically, we had to turn that into the state and, uh, and what we said was that we would, we would, uh, adhere to the, uh, department, you know, the, uh, Department of Ed, or Department of Health guidelines. Okay, and so we really didn't have to come out and have another plan other than that.
Is that what we're agreeing on, I thought we were talking about doing what we all, we had already come up within our, within this.
Okay, you know, what do you mean?
We had already made a, uh, decision, you know, about what to do with COVID, you know, in, you know, in-house.
But that's, okay, well, I guess what happened was that is the same thing as what the policy is.
We're following the Department of Ed's.
Yeah, I don't think so.
That's what we were doing already.
What, I can have the, you have the history. The policy we had in place, the history, the governor, when he made his statement, killed that first policy. And then we came to a second policy where we said, okay, we have so many, we, we go back to mask. Then we, we blow, then we killed that, and we went to, okay, what we're gonna do is, we're just gonna take the recommendation. And then we had standard D.
But we still had like ten percent guidelines, you know, if we had ten percent.
That was, that was, that was the same thing they were saying.
We're, we're in a.
But we still left it up to the superintendent and then us.
Yeah, cause by their guidelines, but at, at, at the moment, everybody's basically, you know, if, if you're positive, you're five days at home and then five days in a mask.
If you're, it doesn't matter if you're, uh, you know, been around somebody, then you still don't have to miss school, I mean, or anything. Uh, the difference is, the big difference is, is that, you know, your absentee policy for students and staff are go back to what it was pre-COVID. And so, you know, if, you know, I can't have COVID five times, you know, I mean, there's some that.
How many grandmothers you got?
I, I, I mean, there's some, some that it hit hard and, you know, really bad, and then there's some that abused it. But this way, it goes back to, you know, record policy. Now, there is langencies and strenu- and stark constances and everything, okay?
In, in this, does it allow for us to change our mind?
Yes.
Six months, this is kind of premature right now to forecast what's.
You can change your COVID policy anytime you get ready to, okay?
But if, if you, if you look at what they're saying, if this area, and, and they, they could agree it down. If this area is hit, then there's a change for this area, a recommendation for this area and not for the state. If we become real in flux with COVID.
Now, didn't they kind of gerrymander those areas?
Yeah, and, and that's on them, and see, that, that, that gives them a leeway, well, this is what they're recommending for this area. This is what the, the head department will recommend for our area, and we would have to follow that.
Well. By our policy, you would have to follow that, but technically, I mean, legally, you could say, no, we're gonna do something different, but.
Well, I think, I think that's probably.
Where we, where people got in trouble was they said they were gonna follow the, uh, ADC, you know, and then also it became way worse. You know, it was out there than what we want. So there's really nothing to vote on and, in, in, I don't see. Okay, uh, the bonus for APR S R, uh, you know, we, we, we got that all approved. Uh, and I'd like you to authorize us to go ahead and pay that, uh, you know, at the Thanksgiving, like you, like you originally planned. Okay, but I need a vote to, and it needs to include authorized, you know, fifteen hundred for certified, seven hundred and fifty for, for non-certified.
We have a part time.
We have part time.
Thirty, thirty, yeah. Is that right, okay, okay. So I make a motion that we pay from our S R funds to be paid in the November twenty twenty-two paycheck, fifteen hundred dollars for full-time bonus, a seven fifty for part-time and three fifty for, or seven fifty, I'm sorry, for non-certified staff and three fifty for part-time. Second.
So we got, we got motion second, all in favor of the motion, say I, all in the same side. Motion passed.
Okay. Uh, purchasing card. Uh. Basically, right now, if, if. Not, and I'm not talking about paying bills, I'm talking about on a daily deal where we have to write a check for somebody to go somewhere or do something. Then that person has to go and then get reimbursed, and there's some people that's a tough deal to do. Some people have to do a credit card, you know, for a motel or whatever, and some, some people choose not to have credit cards. Uh, and I'd like to get a purchase, I'd like to authorize to get a purchasing card and what, a purchasing card, not a bunch of purchasing cards. And number one, it, it allows, it allows, it, it will be in, you know, the county department and, uh, under lock and key where she can, she can call a motel, I mean, you know, get a motel reservations, pay for this, pay for somebody, a team going somewhere or something, you know, something like that. Where you can do that and not have to write a check or leave a blank check, you know, and then take it or like that. It, and plus on a, on a receipt basis, when she gets it, then it's a documented deal, it's a, it's, it's a smart move. There's also downsides, I mean, like credit cards, a lot of schools have credit cards and each administrator has one and all, and that's not what I'm, I, I've been there and done that, you know, uh. But I think the, uh, you know, I think you need a purchasing card. And I think what they're gonna do is before they get that purchasing card, we'll authorize her to, to get it. And, or us to get it, and then they will set up guidelines of how it's gonna be used. In other words, you'll have to do this in order to do it, and it's not gonna be one that Jerusah goes and hands it to somebody and they go off with it. It'll be done through our office, but it'll make, it'll make simplify her paperwork somewhat.
But who will be in charge of that card, Jerusah or Rhonda?
Rhonda ultimately, but Jerusah will probably be one that pretty much, you know, has it most of the time.
Who, who will have audit control?
I'd be, I'd be Rhonda and myself.
And when I'm saying any of because, and make sure we understand, if this is outside, because I'm saying if this is outside of guideline, they're gonna have to reimburse us.
Correct. Well, again.
But I'm, I'm saying, because if they don't, then we move to this very action.
Correct, well.
Because I see some abuses in the system.
Well.
Because if, if I wanna stay at a five seasons, I'm going on school business, I'm not staying the five seasons, I'm sorry, I just can't stay there. That's why I wanna stay here, that's why, I wanna book my room, but come on, let's be reasonable. We, we, we. Cause of.
What happens is.
But it's like, I, I want this room right here.
Right.
No, I need some guidelines there because, I, I can see, I can see some abuses, I can see some meal abuses.
They have to limit it.
Well, it still will be, okay.
That's why I'm saying.
The purchasing card wouldn't be for like meals and stuff like that. But right now, for example, when they stay at a motel, that's getting, they go through and, and do that and they get reimbursed for that. And so we would be the same type.
I'm gonna ask you because I'm looking at reimbursement for meals and log in our budget.
Yeah.
So we are reimbursing for meals.
Correct.
So it, it should cover meals.
They get so much by, by RS, they get so much a day for meals. So they can go eat somewhere and cost a hundred dollars and, but they only get so much a day for meals.
I mean, I'm, what, that they need to know what, what is per diem meals for meals.
Yeah.
See, I'm, I'm making sure we're, we're, we're not out for it, I'm not, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm for it because that's what we do, that, and I, I see, I see the benefit of it, but I also see way with abuse, I'm asking the question, who's auditing this? So when we sit down here, I'm like, okay, how you didn't catch that?
Right.
Why this person got this and this person got this, is this your friend you're taking care of and, and this is somebody you don't know?
Yeah.
I mean, the rules, I mean, so when they sit down and, and they're called, hey, you know, cause, cause when I used to audit, I called. Hey, this is what, this is what you was guaranteed, thi- this is, this is mileage, this is your lodge, this is your meals, that's it.
Right, well, a, a, a credit card, schools that have credit cards, where like for a superintendent, and I've had them where I can use it and I can put it down for any meal I do or any debt or travel or gas or whatever I want, that's not what we're doing, a purchasing card is only for a purchase. Okay, so it's a little bit, it's a lot you can put, and you can put restrictions on the card itself. So that, you know, somebody went, you know, I mean, you couldn't go and spend five hundred because the, the purchasing card has a, a limit on it. But I, I'm okay with, I'm, I, I do think that we need to give you those, those guidelines.
So, so we, many is a travel card. So it's just there now, you need to get meals, so we look at a travel card.
Yeah. So, I mean, and you can, we, and again, we table that and then I can go back and give you the guidelines.
Yeah, I would like to see who's gonna be accountable and what the rules of use would be for.
Well, yeah. I mean, it'll be Jerusah and, and, and Rhonda.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about like the protocol of what you can.
Okay.
Use it for what you can.
And be fine.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of on the other side of this here now, I mean, we, we, we have both, we have, I'm thinking, I'm saying, let's get the ball started. Cause you see, I got it, start, get, get it set up and, and do it at the same time, because some of this stuff ain't gonna show up to after you hit the road. And I, I don't wanna wait, cause right now, this is that time for the card is gonna be used, this is that time, right, right, a lot, a lot going on at this time. So I, I would say, let's just get the card, we may not use it, but we'll have it.
Yes.
As the guidelines come.
About the next board meeting.
Don't drag our feet on getting the card.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to do.
Sure. So can I, can I make an emotion to authorize a superintendent's office to secure a purchasing card for use by authorized personnel with the point that we would have guidelines in place by our next board meeting?
Second.
Well, we got a motion to second, all in favor of that motion, say I, all in the same same side. That motion passed.
Okay, uh, budget approval, you all had the budget. For Rhonda, here's front and center. Any questions you got, and you have any?
Man, I just wanna make a statement, it's, I appreciate that budget, that's been really important, uh, compared to what we've had in the past. Uh, one thing that I did have on the, that I was looking at the budget is, how, uh, how did we come up with some of the numbers as far as like what are projected for like this next school year, you know, you say where we have a bigger, bigger number, they didn't spend it all, and then we lowered the number. And I, I know how budgets work, you can tell me if you just, they didn't spend it all, you lowered it.
Correct.
Yes.
Well, and also, also, we're, we're gonna have, you know, quite a bit less revenue this year. And so we're laid up, the, the hundred and nine, I think a hundred and ninety-eight, uh, uh, um, loss funding, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, you know, helps offset that. But also, uh, but also, you know, we, Rhonda's worked hard at it, at, you know, re, you know, reducing that. The, the difference in the budget is there will be, if, if this came out picture perfect, no changes, you know, it's not gonna happen. You know, then, uh, you know, then we would, we would need to pull twenty thousand dollars from building funding in order to make it work. But having lost four hundred thousand dollars in revenue or three hundred and something, that's, that's pretty good deal. And. We'll talk. I, I was very, very proud of Rhonda for what she did, she performed miracles.
So why is there more question?
No, I got, I got my answer ahead of time. I mean, but y'all know, my, my question was only this, and he, I gotta help this down, I, I was just looking, I know there was nothing budgeted for substitute teachers. And I made sure when you do use sub teach, but they let me know that it was somewhere else, but I would look at that number, and I was also streamlining, so I know what we gonna do next year.
Yeah.
When it come down to them raises that will not, not be funded.
Nice.
But I, I appreciate your numbers.
Well, there's a lot of.
I looked through it thoroughly.
I've, I've been in a position before where I had lost money, you know, lost funding money, but I didn't need that money in the next budget. Okay, cause I had enough balance, so I held that money sitting there for a rainy day or for some other reason. Okay, well, we're in a position where we need that money, and so we used that a hundred and ninety-eight thousand for the year, so.
If we have any more questions?
Yeah, I didn't say one more, and I, it, it, it's just my knowledge, I don't know. I'm looking at everybody taking curve, but I'm not seeing the band taking curve, I, I know they get the receipts from the, from the gates, but I'm seeing, are they being fair like everybody else?
Yes. Like after full ball game?
And I'm, yeah, and I'm looking at, are we actually sitting down, talking to them, so, okay, what are we looking at with company gate receipts, what do we actually look like? Because I know their only funding is, are, you know, soliciting and gate receipts, but we never get to see the gate receipts. So I have no idea how they're looking financially.
We never see their concession.
Yeah, I'm saying.
We don't have, you know, you don't have any, well, we don't have any idea, I don't have any idea of what they make in concessions.
And that's, and that's, and what I'm saying is, why?
Well. I mean, you could ask, but I don't have to tell you.
But I'm just saying, but they ask for other things, and it's gonna make me say no.
I do ask.
And I'm saying, that's why I'm saying it, but I like to see what they have, because if there are not that many home games, there is no concession concessions. So I would like to, you know, and I'm looking at everything being budgeted, and we got a full-time state championship being, and I'm trying to figure out what's going on here.
I'll, I'll, I'll go tune down Bernard, wants to know.
Yeah, if, 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 if they, if they choose not to, you know, I'm gonna be like, okay, I see, I see why you're not in the budget.
I don't care, I don't care.
Cheerleaders buy their own uniforms or something.
But they get some, but, no, we wrote, we wrote a healthy check for the choose this year, we wrote a healthy check for the choose this year. And, 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 and nobody's saying nothing about us getting that eighteen thousand dollars back either, we gave them twenty thousand dollars, you're so y'all know.
Okay.
And they're supposed to give us back eighteen, I ain't forgot about that. So, so they get some money.
You did that last year.
That was for this year, it was for this year. But the catch of this year, have you been informed of any reimbursement? All right then. Cause we did it last year for this year.
In charge of that.
It's like kids.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I made a point about, don't, don't present it to me that way, if you ain't planning to be a pay it back, you could ask for it. But if you say you're gonna pay it back, we had a nice meeting, I mean, I expect you to what, but my only question was, is how they looking? If, if this is okay with them, he's okay with me, but I'm trying to figure out, okay, what's really going on here? Because I don't want them to come to ask if we could have been taken care of in the front end.
They, you know, we, they, they do, we do pay things for.
I know.
So, I know, on top, whatever they get, so.
Do they ever come in and ask for any money?
Oh, yes. But that's, I, I'm really, I'm really good, but.
For not anymore questions, do we have a motion to accept this budget for twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
I make. I like make the motion, we accept the twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
Second motion.
We have motion and second, all in favor of that motion, say I, all in the same the same side. The vote passed.
All right, all right, uh, when I got here, I was invited to go tour the softball field and, uh, and it, you know, it's, I'm beholden to, yeah, honestly, to you. And found out a little bit of history about it.
Hello, your presentation.
And.
Can you say hello?
I can see where.
Good luck. And so I visited with her and she already had her facts and figures together, and so I said, why don't you just present it to the board? So go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, with what you just got finished saying, I would, would like to say that, uh, I'm going on my third year here and, and I'm not really big on asking for things when you don't serve anything and haven't done anything. Uh, we have, uh, started to make progress to begin to do things here, and I'm hoping that with what I'm about to ask for, that it will greatly pay off for the young ladies to complete what we were trying to start. And so I'm here tonight to talk about, uh, some softball field renovations, okay, uh, you know, I know that's one thing like that. Um, I have been here two years now, third, my third, and in the last couple of years, we've seen an increase, and I'm not only in softball roster, but just girls athletics here. We have sixty girls in, in athletics, which will eventually lead me to coming here one day to talk about getting support coaches in girls athletics, but that's for another time. But roster increases have gone up, um, success has gone up in almost all of our girls sports, basketball had a great year last year, traffic done great things, softball has made it to the quarterfinals the last two seasons, like we are up and coming, girls are excited to go to the weight room now, girls are excited to, well, they're still not really liking to run, but they're getting there and they're seeing the results of having a, a set program to make us better as a whole. Where the boys have had it for years and girls are finally starting to see some of those benefits of, of just what program is supposed to be like. So with that, just softball alone, we have lots of up and coming talents in our program right now, uh, and lots of those girls are younger. And so with that, I've been allowing some of the junior high girls to come to practice and to learn my ways, to learn our programs ways, to learn what we are trying to strive for, so they can have an unbelievable high school career in the time that they're at burden. To learn what we are trying to strive for, so they can have an unbelievable high school career in the time that they're at burden. Um, in order to have that, and to have the best, that we are gonna need proper equipment, and, uh, most importantly, a proper playing surface. Uh, it will make practices safer, it will make games safer, it will make games actually happen after it rains an inch or ten inches. And, uh, that is just what we're gonna need to be even more efficient. Um, right now, on our field, the deficiency we face are, the field was made, half a year ago, was made of grass tractor. And, uh, in that, it is very rocky, it is not level, it holds water, um, like crazy. And so, and it's just because of the field surface they put on, I don't know when the years have been here, it's ever had anything done to it. Um, I remember my, the first time I, I got the field game ready, and the girls went out, and the, the shock and awe of, it looks like a softball field. And I didn't know whether to pat myself on the back, like, man, what's, what's been going on here as far as girls athletics go? So, um, you know, the last few summers, and throughout school year, I did work continuously on it. And to where like, this is after we killed a lot of the grass on the field, and tilled some of it up, and then by the end of. Day or many, um, I had it looking like this. Another view of that is from this angle, when you can see how bad the edges are, and there's no edges to this. And I show you this to show you, I'm good at field work, I just need a proper surface to where it will uphold. No matter what happens as far as weather goes, uh, especially for the girls that actually ride, it doesn't feel like concrete and that and that. So here's some pictures of what happened after it rains. So this puddle right here, which surrounds shortstop, the second base area, will come over your ankles. And that's not all that much water, you can see right here, it's somewhat dry, and the rest of it, you can walk on it, but right there, it's just so unlevel that. That water will come over your ankles. Here's from another angle of behind that, after we drained some off, you can see the build, the footsets and all of that. And girls in the background working on it, trying to get it ready. Here's right on top of it, and then we can say, well, let's tarp the field, well, here's what it looks like after we tarp the field. The way the fields sit in that hole, um, the, the water runs right off and goes up underneath the, the tarp. And the tarp you put, uh, we have, and I was approaching it, what Anderson meant to return field. Uh, Anderson got a lot of the equipment over here for this, and it's just, it's the better time in there. So there's that. So how do we fix it? Well, it needs to be laser graded to make the field level, cut the proper infield dimension, add saw in the areas needed, which are behind home plate, down the baseline. Would, um, make our infield playing surface a little bit skinnier, which we would have to do quite as much field work. And just add an actual proper infield material versus rest track material that has covered in the rocks. Um, a great company that's been used all over the state, in colleges and high school, is Sherwood Lawn and Landscaping Company. On their Facebook page, known as Athletic Field Services of Arkansas, and you can go on that page and see multiple, um. Starts and dishes of what they've done, and I put a couple in this, so here's what they started with, this is the outcome of it.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir. Um, here, just so guys have a few examples of what they're capable of, um. That was the core, this is the after, and for, and after, and before, after. Before and after, they are good at what they do, they will make it level, um, multiple schools have used them, uh, Cutter Morning Star. I've, I've been able to talk to, um, a friend of mine that, that helped coach there, he's on their school board there, he has said excellent things about what they've done. They've continued at Washita, at Arkadelphia, uh, Montello High School is using it, U A M is about to use them to get something done. I talked to the national high school coach today, and they use the city park, and the city does their field, and what the city has done for them has been good, but they are about to use this company to come in. To help, uh, get it better, because the surface they have over there, sometimes instead of do what needs to be done. So with that comes, and my, it's not gonna show up. You know, well, that was the final thing, well, anyways, it, it had everything laid out, uh, I'm not sure why it won't show on here. But, uh, they had everything it was to lay out, and in total, it's gonna be twenty-nine thousand. On the first deal I sent to you guys, um, it was a couple thousand less than that, but since I was talking to the company again. They left off a couple things, and so the grand total to actually do what we need done out here, they come and, and give me their estimates for. It's twenty-nine, one twelve and sixty cents, which is a high amount of money. I have asked for a, a rounded up total of thirty thousand, and that is to have the right tools to be able to keep the field up to par after we get the new surface on there. But rates that we need are about a hundred dollars a pop, pool of hose are about forty, brooms vary, I don't even mind using a routine push broom. You can find it at Walmart for twenty bucks, but you can, the actual baseball softball guru ones, they can go anywhere. Uh, sure dry, which would be after it rains, where you, you know, you're gonna have to use a little bit of type of conditioner to keep, keep your field back dry. Around fifty bucks for a fifty, uh, pound bag, and then our bullpen area that we would need, because we don't have one. Uh, when our girls go to warm up, or when another team goes into warm up, you just gotta find an area and hope you don't hit mom and pop in the head. You know, I'm trying to get them back behind the center field, but they don't have to duck and dodge or foul balls, and all the fans are saying. Um, so, you know, what have I done on my end to try to get to this total? Well, last year, a lot of parents got together, and they raised about six thousand dollars, which is a long stretch away from what we're asking for. But I tried to hold off on that, um, and because, um, there, we have lots of other fundraising that we want to do. Whether it be things we've already done, or what we're planning to do to raise extra money. Because things that I would like to use with the parents and use, and what we can use with this money, would go to just actual equipment needs. In order to run a very effective and efficient practice with the amount of girls we have now, on top of it just being me by myself in the fall. And then just me and Coach Love in the spring, with the amount of girls, like, having these kind of equipment pieces really help a, a, a practice run efficient, effective. Not only are we having to worry about softball, but we're also having to worry about, more about time. A lot of times, we're sharing girls with cheer, with track, with cross country, with basketball, and by the time they get to us, our time is limited. And so having better equipment would lead to better practices. Um, just for some of those things that were on that list, I've got some prices for, and that's two thousand dollars. Some more prices are another thirty-two hundred, which makes it about a rough estimate of five thousand. So there goes almost that six thousand parents have already raised. On top of, we need a new equipment shed, I'm just estimating two to three thousand for it. Right now, our shed is up under the middle school, um, little gym, and it is not, it's underneath there because it's not weather efficient. So all of our equipment and our chalk and our paint and our fetching gear and everything else will be soaking wet. And so we need something that we don't have to walk a mile to and fro every day in order to store our equipment and, uh, maintenance tools. Um, our dugouts are struggling, uh, to say the least. And, and, but these are just things that I would rather use the money that our parents have gotten in all of our fundraising, future endeavors. On actual field equipment and playing equipment for us to do better. So I guess in close, my proposal to you all is to see about potentially asking for the. Twenty-nine and change, uh, for the actual field of service.
Question number one.
Yes, sir.
Cause of the amount you asking for, who else have you got bids from?
So, uh, after talking to a lot of the people that I knew, um, that have used this company, there is another one in Jonesboro. They have not been able to get down here to give me an actual quote yet, but they can tell me over his phone, and estimate was about five thousand more than what.
Cause the reason maybe, because of the amount, we can't just take one.
They're tip-staffed. They're tip-staffed.
Tip, okay.
Um.
Got you.
So, if we approve that amount of money for the new field, is the tarp you had adequate to protect that new field?
No, sir.
And what does a new field, a new tarp cost?
Anywhere from two to five thousand.
Really?
So it just depends on size you get and all that, but with our, the infield being brought in a little bit, maybe that size could go down some. You know, and they're gonna put further, plan on putting a new saw, um, where you don't have to get as up any of the five thousand, but you don't want to get. Too inexpensive, because you're gonna get what you paid for when it comes to that, uh, which is what I found out of the last part of the year I've been.
Now this, this, uh.
Why are you looking at yourself? I'm looking at, what is your proposed caffeine date? What I mean is, what's the last date we can make a decision?
Well, uh, right now, we're having small fall season, and, uh, we played tomorrow night, and next Wednesday night, and then we're finished. Until we start back up to the end of February. And so this, a, a job like this, doesn't take very long to do, but to work the building in and get it right to be, um. Be really good playing, the sooner the better, but, um, and because it's about to get cold, and so I'm gonna need to really work on that. There could be before the rain season starts, and the, the tunnel and ice and everything else to work with. I would like to pack some time to be able to do my part on it, as far as what I would do to film that every day, the dragging, the edging, things of that nature. Uh. Oh, yes, sir, it could be, that could be called, and, and it's done fairly quickly, but it's hard, just like, when am I gonna get, um.
No, my, my, my caffeine, sorry, my, my caffeine, how long does they say it'll take them to do this?
Okay.
See, I've heard that, I'm still looking at the rules. So, I mean, I'm looking at this, so if they say you all that work in a couple of days? That's what I'm looking at, my caffeine date, okay, we got season starting here, we need to, we need to make a decision back here, uh. This is what we looking at right here, and maybe wish this won't be wish, wish gift, but, uh. I'm, that, that's what I'm looking at, so they said a couple of days, they can do all that work.
Sooner you did it, the better, the more chance to get it cleaned up, fixed.
It goes raining, we're in trouble.
You know, somebody, I'm, 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 I'm looking at the rain, between now and February.
That's what I'm saying, and sooner we do it, well, it's not too wet, but.
Because I'm thinking, if they do it, and it rain real bad, is they gonna have to come back and redo it?
Oh, no, sir, not with this town.
Do you have any experience with other school districts that like, you know, we got a certain amount of money we spent on the boys. Got a certain amount we spent on the girls. Are we in, uh, title nine issue as far as this imbalance?
Yeah.
Well, look at it, well, look at it, don't go down that road, because you gotta look at the thirty thousand dollars, you just.
Real question, I mean, it's.
So you don't want to go down that road?
No brainer.
But look at that now.
Yeah.
I mean, compared to other school districts that you might have seen.
Say, um, I don't know that I'm, uh, well, if it's not to answer that, it, being here sort of by the time as I have, but all I know is it takes one foot phone call. And you probably roll real fast here.
Yeah, sure, we don't need to do that, that's what I was getting at, we don't need to be in a problem like that.
The girls gotta have a safe field to play on.
Definitely.
I mean, it costs money.
The only, the only.
There's no doubt.
The only downside to, I'm, I think you, I think you need, downside to it is gonna come out of the building. Not coming out of operating, and I just want you to know that, because there's not any operating work to come out of.
I have a question as far as the, uh, the, they said they'll put flywood down over the turf area, ribbon on by equipment. Can we get some kind of, uh, I, I, I assume, are they gonna level the, the grass part of the field as well?
Or, around the back edge and all, and I think they're talking about field and coming in, uh, to get their machines and trucks in or whatnot. And then, you know, we only have that opening on inside the machine, uh, not machine, cage side, and so I'm wondering if they're talking about fielding here.
Okay, so I guess my question, I got multiple questions, are they gonna have to take the fence then, to get in there?
With that gate, he didn't mention that when he talked to me.
Are they gonna do anything for drainage, or does it need any kind of work, drain, once they get it built up?
When it's leveled, it should drain properly, uh, the biggest thing is the way that the field sit, and it is in a bowl, so to speak, um. It, it should help with, with, with where he's trying to bring in the saw on the backside of home plate, but that's never been an issue, like, I've been able to get that free drive. Compared to putting it in spin on the backside right before where the lip meets the outlet.
So if they put flywood down on the turf area to drive over, if they cause any damage, is that gonna be, that's gonna be fixed? I'm assuming, and everything will be looking exactly the way you want it to look, without extra cost.
That would be something that I.
Without extra costs.
Oh, absolutely, that would be something to make sure of, before, you know, we sign anything or do anything or anything like that.
The only other thing is on the bottom, where it says a load of topsoil will be provided by the customer. It says a load, or it says load of topsoil, do they have an idea or estimate, or do we have an idea or estimate of how much topsoil is gonna be needed?
When we talked that day, I think that was just for the sand to go over, in thought.
I just, I just didn't know if that's gonna be a substantial extra cost or not.
Not the way he spoke to us that day.
Top rest and slide.
So if you, if we get a new field, you're gonna need a new tarp to cover that new field. That's gonna cost even above that, so you actually need more than what you're asking.
Good question, good question, my man, I'm done with you. Where's this drainage going?
Uh, the field will be able to hold it, and it will be where it goes off like it's posted.
He goes, I, I, I don't want it to drain to the P W practice field, and then we got another issue. Yeah, I'm saying, but now we may be a little higher, we're gonna be leveled. Next question, probably for you, what is the balance in the building fund? I was, save me some, save me some looking.
I mean, that's the only thing, you haven't been doing.
Ain't speaking it.
First by.
Yes.
Uh, this brought up a question, we've had a lot of expenditures that's kind of fell out of the sky on us. Is, at some point, would, could we introduce another bond issue to help? Stretch this out, instead of trying to do it out of your budget, you know, the yearly budgeting that we have, and, uh.
Be, answer that would be, yes, you could.
Or, uh, but would we want to do that?
Well.
Is that a, is that a Bible?
Well, well, I've got a, I've got a finance thing in, I, I got October, when you, October fourteen, maybe?
How much was that total?
With Stevens.
Cause does this make sense, you probably gather what I'm saying, lock, lock some of this stuff together, and then put it on the box.
Well, you could put it, yeah. The reason things have been falling out this time.
No, I, I, I didn't, I'm not blaming, just like, we, we, we spent a lot of money on that stuff.
So, but yeah, uh, there's, there's a lot of everything, you know.
Said, I'm just like, it hasn't not put our building, operate, I'm in jeopardy.
How much it costs to do dugouts, fix dugouts too, you said they is in bad shape.
There's anybody, so, give me a quote.
Really? Right. Right, and that's what they look like.
The boy is, you're asking, really good.
Right, I mean, if you're gonna have to do all this work, with me like these old dugouts in there too, and get them done same time, we used to be coming back. Want more money.
Okay, you do me a favor.
Yes, sir.
Can you put this, put it in there and just send us a proposal, you, you ain't got to come back, just, you can just send through, send us a number, a number.
Right.
Take, take, take y'all path now, take, take, take the peril, take, take the other path, and what we looking at, so we can actually see a number. So we can actually figure out what we've, because I don't wanna say, okay, then we come back, we, we got, just telling now, we're gonna handle it.
Well, and, and that's probably my fault, because I haven't asked her to do that. Because I probably was gonna be very grateful to get, put this instead of asking for more. So, I mean, that's why I haven't asked her for any more money, uh, but yes, we can, we can go try to do that. Could you, could you approve this tonight, and then do that also later?
I mean, I think it, it, with the weather, the way it's going to turn typically, you need to get it done now, and not wait until it starts raining.
It could start raining next month.
I think we should get it done.
I think, could you go ahead and start to, maybe have a phase one, phase two.
Yes.
That deal where you get this done, and then we'll get that back to you, and maybe we don't get the, maybe we get this done now, and then we. We could get that other done before the season, fine, if not, then that'd be phase two, we could do it. That'd be okay?
Work for you.
I, I, I'm all about it, we need playing service.
You gotta have the field play on and while the weather's dry, we're gonna have to do.
I, I got a one more question, so once the field gets done, would you cover it with the tarp? I mean, do you need a tarp immediately after the field gets done so that you protect it during the winter? Or if it starts raining?
But only right before we would play, like we know rain's coming and we're going on, uh, Monday and we're supposed to play on Thursday, we're gonna cover it, you know, so that way we can pull.
So it doesn't say all winter covered, so it doesn't get.
Everything else.
Do you think it's gonna delay us though, like if we start this project and then we try to figure out about these dugouts, we can take that's. Like, that's not gonna.
That could even be a summer project. Surface is what is right, our key, dire need.
Cause I'm looking at this, okay, we got a one foot field. They come in and do the dugout, what if they damage the field?
They shouldn't be on field.
We don't know.
That'd be best job.
Because, because how they gonna get in? They gotta come to that same gate.
They don't have no business getting on the field and doing dugouts, it's all behind the fence, they shouldn't even be on nowhere on field.
Right. And typically, when you get a good company, they're used to doing that. Uh, and there's been a lot of field renovations like that where they just are.
Period, there should be concern.
I mean, you should definitely be soaked in that.
Not mess with it before they fix what they have.
Must make them sign a contract and put it in there.
That's right.
Which are very, very.
True.
Yes.
Well, I like to make motion, we approve thirty thousand dollars for the softball field project.
Cause we got a motion of second, uh, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All in same side.
And we plead.
What you do after that?
Don't carry what you do.
It means undefeated state championship, right?
I wanted to know, basically the thing we looking at now, don't carry with that dugout price, cuz you may not get it. So don't carry.
I, I bet you she would have had it if she'd been asked to, that wouldn't.
I was, I was very tempted to throw it in, but it wasn't part of the, what we told them on here, those.
Second session.
Now we're going to enter into the second session.
Feeling relieved.
Yeah, we can do it remotely.
We'll nip in that, we're gonna call the meeting back to order.
I make the motion that we accept the personnel package presented by the producer intended.
Safe the motion.
We have a motion second, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in same side.
I make the motion we're in, Mr. President.
We got motion second, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Ah.
Same side, we're regards.